He's the TCEQ representative from your local area. And he is with the air program in that regional office. Myself, Pritchett Bohach, Kathy Byer, who is helping register, and Jim Fernandez, who is recording the meeting for us, are all of the chief clerk's office. And it is our job to go around the state and conduct these kind of meetings and make sure that we, when we're in the community, record your comments for the official part of the record. Also with us tonight, we have the applicant, who's Chandler Morris, and he's vice president of Navisodic Energy. And I think he'll introduce any other people who has come tonight.
Thank you. My name's Chandler Morris. I work for Navisodic Energy. I am the project manager for the Union Valley Energy Site that we're proposing to build here. With me this evening, I have Thomas Pritchard, our environmental consultant. Tonight, I'll give you a quick overview of the facility that we're proposing to build here in Wilson County. And then I'll turn it over to Thomas, who'll give you a quick overview of air emissions. I'm gonna turn off the lights just a moment, so you can see that in the back. The Union Valley Energy Center is a 543-megawatt peaking power plant. The facility is called a peaking power plant because it is designed to be operated primarily during periods of peak electrical demand, such as hot summer afternoons like July and August, or during extremely cold events in January and February. The facility is also designed to be able to start quickly and come online to meet any emergency requirements that are on the electrical transmission grid, such as when another power plant trips offline, or when the wind suddenly stops blowing, and there is a need for replacement energy to be put onto the transmission grid so that it doesn't fail. As a peaking plant, we will operate during limited times during the year. As such, we have requested a permit from TCEQ for up to 2,500 hours of operation during the 8,760 hours in a year. The Union Valley Energy Center will look similar to the plant that you see on the screen here. This is a three-unit, simple-cycle, peaking generation facility. The plant will be designed in a neat and orderly fashion. It will consist of exhaust stacks approximately 66 feet tall, gas turbine generators, an air intake structure, water storage tank, office warehouse and building, electrical substation, and a natural gas metering yard. The Union Valley Energy Center site here in Wilson County is located approximately a mile off of Highway 1681 on County Road 475. We chose this site due to the infrastructure already in place in the area. On the northern edge of our property, there's a 138-kV transmission line. South of our property, approximately 1,500 feet, is a 345-kV transmission line, which we will interconnect with and send our power out over that transmission line. There are also multiple natural gas pipelines in the area, which will provide fuel for the facility. The facility will get its water from an onsite water well. Plant will not use any more water than a typical 30-acre homestead running cattle. At night, the facility will have minimal lighting. When the plant is not in operation, it will have lights at the entrance and any security lights that are required around the office warehouse building, or other requirements that we may be regulated to have. When the plant is operating at night, the facility, again, will have minimal lighting associated with entrance to the facility around the office warehouse buildings, and in areas where workers will have to go per OSHA requirements for us to have lighting. There may also be lights on top of the stacks, and that will be deemed by the FAA. When the plant is operating, the sound will not be discernible from the background noise around the area. If you're standing at the entrance to the facility, you'll still be able to hear the birds chirping, the coyotes howling, the wind blowing. It's a very quiet environment. The construction period for the plant will last six to nine months. During that period, we will have an average of 30 to 50 workers at the site, with a peak workforce of 150 to 175 workers. During construction, we will work with the county on maintaining County Road 475. After construction, there will be very little traffic associated with the plant, other than the few employees who will be working at the facility. The estimated cost of the three-unit peaking power plant is approximately $150 million. This represents an investment similar to that of a regional shopping mall, and will be one of the largest taxpayers in Wilson County. That's all I have in regards to the overview.
Can we hold your questions while we get through the presentations?
Again, my name is Thomas Pritchard. I'm gonna take a few moments and talk about the air quality impacts of the proposed One of the key points of any air permitting process that TCEQ has to make sure occurs is that a project is protective of the public health and welfare of the area. And that is done by the establishment of EPA-set standards for different pollutants. And their pollutants that are associated with this facility are NOx, CO, PM, and VOCs. These are just typical pollutants from the combustion of natural gas, which is what this facility will use.
Can I ask you to tell people what they... Does everybody know what NOx, CO, what those... Yeah, can you describe what they are?
Nox is nitrogen oxide. CO is carbon monoxide. PM is particulate matter. And PM10 and PM2.5 discerns the size of the particle. Obviously, the small particle is PM2.5. VOCs are volatile organic compounds. And again, these are combustion byproducts of natural gas. Okay, the EPA sets nationally every air quality standards for each one of these pollutants. The primary standard protects against a sensitive population, for example, children, the elderly, asthmatics. The secondary standard set by EPA protects animals, crops, vegetation, and buildings in the area. Wilson County is entertainment for all these standards. Your current air quality here meets these standards. So EPA sets a second level that says that the facility has to meet an increment, so that your air quality doesn't deteriorate. And that is called an increment. So we have NACS, and we have increment. One of our jobs is to model this facility with a computer model to demonstrate that we can meet the NACS and the increment. And this facility meets both of those. I'm gonna go through a series of slides real quickly to kinda show you where this facility stands against the standards. First, we have PM2.5. We have PM2.5. The standard here is on the left. The increment is the second column. The third column is our existing background. This is what is naturally occurring in the atmosphere. The facility's impact is on the far right. Standard's 35, increment is 9. Existing background is 23. Our impact is .8 in this facility. And the 20 slides has the same format. I will go through them too quickly, just stopping. The annual PM2.5, standard is 12, the increment is 4. The background, again, naturally occurring, is 8.8. Our impact is .06. PM10, slightly larger particle size, regulated on a 24-hour basis, the standard is 150, increment is 30. Their natural background is 86, our impact is .89. SO2, sulfur dioxide, standard is 196 for 1 hour, existing background is 79, our impact is .77. 24-hour SO2, standard is 365, increment is 91, our impact is .23. 1-hour nitrogen oxide, regulated on a 1-hour basis, standard is 188, the background is 66, and our impact is 31. NOx on an annual basis, the standard is 100, increment is 25, background is 22, our impact is .76. CO, carbon monoxide, standard is 40,000, the background is 1,372, impact from the facility is 366. On an 8-hour basis for CO, standard is 10,000, background is 1,000, impact from the facility is 203. Finally, we have ozone. We're all probably aware of the ozone. Standard is 75, what is naturally occurring is 7, the facility's effective impact is As I said, before we ran through these slides, and certainly we can back up to them if you have questions, is what this modeling analysis showed is that the proposed facility will not violate the nationally every air quality standards, but then primary standards protecting human health, secondary standards protecting animal, vegetation, and surrounding buildings. And they also, the modeling analysis was done for non-criteria attendants, and those were also evaluated and demonstrated in the files. But I'll stop there, so... No, I just threw a lot out here, so that's all I have.
Can we let the staff do a presentation on how they review the permit, and where we are in the administrative process first?
Sure, but I just wanted to find out, is background and existing, are they the same thing as all of the past?
Did you hear...
When you talked about background numbers and existing levels, and background levels, are those the same thing? I didn't know what background was.
When I said background...
I apologize.
When I said background, I mean, I'm talking about existing monitored background. TCEQ has monitors set up around the state. I have the list of where the monitor is for this general area, but it's measured background for this area, being representative of this area, that's what the background is.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the staff to do a short presentation on how they review the application, and where we are in the administrative process, before we get into the next question.
Hi, my name is Sean O'Brien, and I'm a technical specialist in the air permits division. My job is to review the application to make sure it complies with all TCEQ's air quality rules and regulations. And that includes making sure the application applied what's called best available control technology, or BAT, so that the impacts are acceptable to the community of the world.
My name is Amy Browning. I'm an attorney in the environmental law division, representing the executive director. I want to thank everybody for coming out to the meeting tonight, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about where we are in the process and where to go from here. So the last day of the public comment period for this particular permit will be March 13th, so tonight is not your last opportunity to submit a comment, if you have more comments after tonight's meeting. After the public comment period ends, the executive director will prepare a document called response to comments, or an RTC, that will respond in writing to all the comments received during the comment period, including comments that we received tonight during the formal oral comment period. When we complete the RTC, it will be mailed to all persons who provided comments over the oral mailing list for the permit. And the RTC will include a cover letter that explains how to request a contested case hearing, and the deadline for filing such a request. Request for a contested case hearing goes with the TCEQ commissioners during a regularly scheduled meeting, and they then make a decision on whether or not to grant those requests. Those people who file requests will receive notification when this meeting is scheduled, and have to file a formal written response to consideration by the commissioners. For a contested case hearing to be granted, it must be requested by an effective person. To be an effective person, you must demonstrate you have an interest in the matter that is not common to the general public. You must also include a physical address in your request, so that your proximity to the facility can be determined. Please make sure you include a physical address with your request, even if you normally receive a mail at the mailbox. If the commission is granted by the commission or directed by the applicant, it will go before an administrative law judge of the State Office of Administrative Hearings, or SOA. And the ALJ would be held in evidentiary hearing a similar to a trial, with witnesses' testimony, and her own court report, et cetera, but no jury. At the conclusion of the hearing, the ALJ will issue visitor findings and recommendations, which is called a proposal for decision. And these findings will then be brought back to the commissioners, who will consider the ALJ's findings and issue a final decision on the permit.
That's a lot of info to cover, but let me just say that we'll go over some of this several different times tonight. And also, subsequent filings from the agency itself will go with some of what we just made over to... We'll contain specifics about what we just talked about now, too. As you came in and picked up your agenda, which mine is full of it, it kind of outlined how we're gonna conduct the meeting. We did it in two parts. The first part is meant to be an exchange of information with you. It's an opportunity for you to ask questions of the staff or the applicant, and maybe get answers or chime in on whatever you found out. The second part of the meeting, we don't answer any questions. We take your comment on the record. The second part is what becomes part of the formal record of the agency. First part isn't. So if you wanna make sure a comment or a question that you have is contained in the formal part of the record that goes to commissioners for decision, then you need to make it during the second part. You can do it during both, it doesn't matter to us, but make sure you do it in the second part if you want it to be part of the record, and then keep reminding people for the night and day. The other thing that I wanna explain to y'all is that we use the microphones not just so that everybody can hear what someone is... The questions that are asked, or the comments that are made, and the answers that are given, but also, this is the way that we make a formal record of the meeting. We record the whole meeting. The second part of the meeting is when it's actually filed in the file, as part of the formal record. So when you ask a question, especially during the second part of the meeting, all right, we're gonna have to have you come up to your mic. The second part of that is, is that the registration sheets that you filled out are also a way to track who gave what comment, and make sure that you're on the mailing list. If you give a comment, you're on the mailing list, so that you receive our answers in writing later on in the process. So if you didn't fill one out and you give a comment, we will be asking you to fill one out, so we can track our response to comment to you. And with that, okay, I think I've gone over all the stuff that we need to explain, we can start with the questions and answers. And depending on how many people have signed up to give a formal call, I may limit this part of the meeting, so make sure that everybody has time. 11? Okay, then we should have plenty of time. Go ahead, sir.
So in the Wilson County Times, an article said that you were applying for a FIP, but you had to 1,000 hours per year, and you went much higher than that when you gave your
No, sir, we applied for 2,500 hours of operation with TCEQ. You may be referring to the estimates of what we're estimating the facility will have in terms of hours.
Thank you, David. I just wanted to... In that same article, said you were gonna use 25 gallons of water per hour of operation for turbine. So how did you come up with that mythical figure? The figure 38, you know, 38 of homestead cattle must have several pivots on them.
How we came up with that number is, we applied with the Evergreen District Board a water well permit. We will be limited to the amount of water that we use. The water that we use for facilities for evaporative cooling. So we will only be using water during periods of extreme heat, when it's over 70 or 80 degrees outside, and that's 25 gallons per minute in regards to the turbine's operation.
So do you have to figure how many gallons you estimate you're gonna use a year?
Chandler, I'd like to... Evergreen, we have to figure...
Just leave it right there.
I have a copy of the permit that we helped develop. Do you have the numbers on? A copy's not too much.
Thank you.
I'm Kayla Savage, and I represent the Evergreen Underground Water Conservation District for Wilson County, and one of the two elected members on the board of directors. The permit, and I have a copy of it, from the Navisodic Group, is for two wells on 60... I'm sorry, 30 acres of land. And under our legislation, our legislation by the state, under Chapter 36 of the state water law, everybody in Wilson County, according to our rules, is allowed 2 acre-feet per acre, for each acre that they own that is continuous. So the amount of water that they are permitted for is 60 acre-feet a year. They are asking for two wells, one of which will be the primary well, and one which will be redundant. The permit has been split between the two wells. They get 60 acre-feet, but they permit it for two wells at that point. And they are estimating a five-horsepower pump, a five-horsepower pump, and 40 gallons permitted of water that will be pumped. Now, irrigation wells pump 1,000 gallons a minute, you know, whatever, it is a very different thing. There will not be any excessive use of water from this permit, there's not... And the Evergreen, they have given us a permit that is administratively complete, has all of the information, the well depth will be at 450 feet, and so the Evergreen take this permit, waiting to hear the results of the air quality permit hearings. But the amount of water that they will be using is very reasonable, and very much what everybody else that had 60 acres could use, but they can't have anymore, and we can't give them any less, that's the law. So at 40 gallons a minute, 1,000, 2,000 hours a year, or a year, it's not a lot, it's not an issue, I don't believe. And I understand that there will be some recycling of this water?
Yes, ma'am, to the extent that we can, we will recycle it.
Okay, so we do not see that this is an issue for the aquifer, or for any of the people in the area. This should be very much like a well that waters have gathered in the past.
Okay, sir. Overeater, ma'am?
Yes, that's all.
Do you want me to slide next to your question?
You say you're recycling the water. How do you do that?
Sir, we use the water for evaporative cooling. So once it runs through, we may have a slight amount of water for water discharge. If that water's able to be used, we will use it, or otherwise, we will discharge that water, take it to a place to discharge it.
We've been here with using a lot more water than I have, but I'm pleased, but what you use it is not... We get all kinds of rumors, and we don't really do it. I'm on the freezing, springy, you know, freezer. My well, my irrigation well, that's at 450 feet, 'cause it hit rocks, and we went another three feet, just to make sure it was solid. So I got irrigation well, it puts out about 1 and 1/2 horsepower single phase, and I do a lot of irrigating. I irrigate a hay field, and then I irrigate a boat field, and then I do my... So you use the less water than I do. This is bad, so...
Okay, ma'am, here comes tonight.
You mentioned a background level figure. I wanted to ask you, how do you determine that? You go on site, I mean, there's a refinery, and a chicken plant, and cattle in the area. Have you measured the actual levels at that site? Have you done an environmental study of any sort, or is this just an estimate over the area?
What happens, generalized, is if the monitor isn't located in the county, they have to find a county with similar population and industry, or worse, so more people or industry, and use that monitor as a background.
EPA, I understand that EPA, that TCEQ is handling permitting for EPA, that some states can do that. But my understanding from talking to someone in Texas Parks and Wildlife was that the EPA requires an environmental assessment on-site. I may have misunderstood, but I talked to someone at TCEQ, and TCEQ, for some reason, doesn't. I don't understand how you can just estimate across the board, who has a chicken plant and a refinery in town? How can you tell?
Well, just to clarify one thing, EPA hasn't delegated the permit program to us. We are what's called Sipit Group. So EPA, by federal law, has to do an environmental assessment. TCEQ does not have that requirement.
Why? I don't understand. They didn't have to do the same, not to be complicated.
I don't know. EPA approved our program, and that's what statute says.
Okay.
Sean, can I address one comment? Part of the modeling that I referred to in those impacts that are up there, if they exceed a certain level, you know, where EPA has deemed it to be significant, then, okay, then we have to not only model the facility as being proposed, we have to model a lot of other, all the other facilities within 50 kilometers of the site.
What is 50 kilometers?
Kilometers? 50 kilometers? Somebody help me out with miles.
Some ask it, 'cause I don't know.
Thank you, Frank. About 30 miles in the area. So those other facilities that you were referring to in the area, if they polluted, progressed in the analysis, 'cause this is step analysis, and they were a part of the analysis, the ones that you were referring to.
I understand there's a... I don't know if I can talk about this here. I understand, I'm gonna ask, know that there's a greenhouse gas permit that you also applied for. This... Can we, if, I think I have some comments on that later I'll make during the formal session. Is that permitted here? I just wanted to ask.
No, that's a separate process, and so comments on that particular permit should be reserved for that particular permit.
Dickie Jackson, Wilson County Judge. I have a question. Okay, you have three stacks 65-foot tall, correct? Okay, everybody here that's been to San Antonio has seen city public service stacks up there, and at times, I don't know if they go down, or what they do, but you'll see smoke emitted from those stacks. Will there be any times where anything's emitted from these stacks, like smoke, or what will be coming out?
What is that facility you're referring to? Is it coal? That's what I thought he was referring to, is a coal facility. This is natural gas, so certainly there's going to be a difference in your opacity, and that's what we're... What you're referring to, when you see something like, as you referred to, is smoke. Natural gas, I hope, I think we all know, just from our typical gas mills and stuff, burn is pretty clean. But you should not see any smoke from these stacks.
Yeah, Judge Jackson, and I'd add to that, that you want... Yeah, Judge Jackson, and I'd add to that, that you won't see smoke from the stacks coming out. If you do see anything from the stacks, it's a difference between the ambient air and the temperature of the exhaust coming out of the stacks. Because at that exhaust temperature, you'll see a difference.
The heat waves coming out.
Exactly, sir.
Can I have a few minutes at the very end of y'all's meeting when y'all return?
Yes, sir.
Take notes at the ground, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. What do you mean? Are you, do you want to?
The water's completely through, I just want to talk to you for just a second.
Okay, on the record?
No, off the record.
Oh, okay.
Is there something completely?
Oh, okay, okay. And thank you for being here. I'm sorry, like, no, I would have, I would have recognized you at the beginning of the meeting. Are there any other elected officials that are here that we haven't introduced that would like to serve, stand up?
Larry, one of the county commissioners for this area.
Okay, thank you for being here as well. Okay, any more questions? Yes, sir, come forward. Okay, him first, then you, sir, and then, okay?
I'm out in home, I live about a mile from the site. And I may get in a lake, is there a photo of the, it's actually the working west end of the building? As far as the, it's evaporating?
Yeah, could you put that?
What you can see?
What do you see? I live on hills, so I'm going to see it every day. So I want to see what I'm going to be looking at.
Okay, yeah.
Science is quite close. That's what you see. You say, I don't see any.
Well, even during the evaporation of forty gallons a minute, you're not going to have any.
It's not going out the stack?
It's not going out.
The, the water is used to cool the inlet air so that the turbine thinks the temperature is lower so it operates at full capacity.
So it's different than the one in San Diego that you see of mass?
That is, yeah, that is, that is correct.
That is a natural gas operation there also.
Yes, but they're two different type of facilities. That is a combined cycle facility. With a combined cycle, cycle facility, they have a steam turbine attached to the, to the unit. So they run the natural gas turbine, use the exhaust, run it through a heat recovery steam generator. That goes to create the steam power. And they have a water cooling tower there. And that's often what you'll see is the mist coming off the water cooling tower or the difference in the, in the temperature from the stack. But what you see there is the water cooling tower. And that's a combined cycle where this is a simple cycle power plant. And the difference is the primary difference there. There's a steam turbine on that facility. There is no steam turbine associated with this facility.
All right. That's great, thank you. Like I said, I live about a mile away from the site. Pervading wind is southeast, so whatever blows out of that stack is going to probably come across my area. The particles that are falling out of there, is there going to be some way of monitoring this over a period of time? If we don't still take, I'm sorry, the word for it? If we actually monitor this over first year, second year, ten year process to see what is actually falling on my property?
It's done through, they'll have to install drift eliminators which eliminate most of the water droplets from actually getting into the air. And then using that value with the water recirculation rate that's predicted. It would be part of a particular monitor back. But we don't.
Oh, you're going forward? I mean, we've been monitoring constantly the site.
I'm not sure where the closest monitor is, but if there's one.
Yeah, sir, we, we're kind of highly regulated in terms of requiring to provide documentation of our operations and what goes on during those operations. We have devices in the facility called continuous emission monitoring devices. And so they measure what is coming out of the facility and the stack at all times during operations. And that's, and we turn that into, work with TCEQ, turn that into TCEQ on an annual basis for review.
Whether the election will study the impact of the area after it leaves there as far as what's falling in the area. Even your monitoring, your monitoring, say whether the number is four to me, uh, as it goes up. We don't know the logistics landing. We don't have it here now, but we're going to get it, right? So whatever it is coming out.
I, I think basically what you're asking is, is do they have, are there any kind of monitors surrounding the facility?
And even like?
Right, well, surrounding a facility, they're maybe at different distances to determine what the impact of the facility is. We don't, we don't.
Well, I know Wilson County doesn't have a particular monitor. And that's your question, never has it been?
Are you asking about particular, ma'am, in particular, specifically, or are you asking about all, all contaminants?
The contaminants as a whole coming in from the area. All the ones that are with breeze are falling a mile away. It's everyone's being followed closer that goes out. We're going to have some impact, but it'll be in that bit, not a little.
So the state has ambient monitors. So monitors that monitor the ambient air for a variety of different. Well, I don't know exactly where they are, but, I mean, we, we can, we have that information. I just don't have it right here in front of me. But Sean is saying there's not a particular monitor in Wilson County. So they would have used a monitor from another county that had similar background for the background for the permit.
Okay, that's fine.
I understand what you're asking. You're asking, are we, do we require them or do we set up monitors around the area? In the general area to see if we can determine what the impact of this facility is on? And we do not typically do those measurements. Okay, sorry. And, and the, the location of monitors is actually online? And I was trying to look it up real quick and, and I will before the night is out. I can show y'all where, how to find that yourself if you're interested. Go ahead, sir.
You were talking about like this game that I wrote on the notice, that's a natural gas. They ever refine it fairly, they pipe that twenty-one miles of there. Where is the nearest transmission line for y'all since it is a natural gas? Where's it getting fed from?
Where's the nearest natural gas?
That trans, uh, transmission line, where y'all going to feed it and plant from?
Electrical transmission, the nearest line is, we have.
I was talking about, isn't it getting, getting fed by natural gas?
Yes, sir, so, so the nearest natural gas pipeline is approximately a mile away. And there are two other pipelines that are within five and a half, six miles of the facility.
So what size pipelines are y'all running through there?
We'll be looking at a sixteen to twelve inch pipeline for the facility.
So it is within ten miles or so, there's not one or more?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sir, it's a cap and then you can come up next. Are y'all looking for a seat? Because I don't know if there's any more chairs that we can get out. There are a few seats up here in the very front.
Two little questions. About the employment, you know, you go here in Wilson County, you're going to employ anybody in Wilson County in the plant? Is that fair or not?
You know, we will employ as many people locally as we can. We work closely with our engineering contractor company that will come to town and hold a job fair to be able to allow local residents to apply for positions with the plant. And, you know, that's one of the things that we like to try and do is work with the community and employ people in the area as we want, want to be a good neighbor.
Little thing is the traffic. Where that load picks off in sixteen eighty-one is under one hill and coming up another hill. Is that going to be an issue with the traffic going back and forth from the plant?
That is something that will have to be looked at and stated. And of course, safety of our employees and other residents is of utmost concern for us. So we will work with the county in regards of looking at any kind of traffic situations that may occur as well as working with them on maintaining count of four seventy-five during the construction.
If you don't have monitors, if you don't have monitors in this area, how can you hold operators accountable for their emissions? And the same thing on the water. How, how can you monitor the amount of water that's used? Although I hear she has less than that, but it's going to be an immediate issue.
Do you want to answer the water? Sure, we'll do that first.
On the, on the water, any sort of, any sort of industrial use of water, requires a monthly report to the Evergreen of the amount of water pumped. There will be meters on these wells and the Evergreen has eighty-three monitored wells across the district. And it will be doing spot checks and everything else and observing everyone who's within the rules. And where a irrigator or a mess well on its support once a year. Any sort of industrial use of water requires a report every month from the company. And looking at the show on the plan.
Can I just also say one thing about that? Is that it's nothing to do with the permit we're here to have. Okay? Now, as far as the other monitoring, Sean, you want to go over what you said before or y'all want to try?
I'll give a shot.
Okay.
What, what are, what are the things that I didn't go into great detail? Because you never really know how far to take this far into detail. What we did was the computer model that input X number of pounds of emissions leaving the stack every hour. And that model predicts impacts outward from the facility. Our receptor grid goes out forty, fifteen kilometers, thirty miles from the facility, predicting impacts around the facility. So that's the numbers that we've got. We're talking about the impacts, those are the highs. Now, you're asking the question after the facility is built, how do you know? Well, okay, the computer model is conservative by nature, designed by EPA, not by us, not by TCQ, designed by EPA. What was inputted in the model, let's just use an example, let's say that we were saying that nitrogen oxide is going to be emitted at two pounds per hour or something like that. And that's what was in the model. As Chandler mentioned a few minutes ago, they will have a monitor on the stack that's measuring what is coming out of the stack. So they have to demonstrate that at all times their emissions are below that initial of two pounds per hour. So then in theory, if you always stay below what you modeled, then your impacts will never be any greater than what was. Does that help?
Can you report those to TCQ?
Yes, they, I mean, they're recorded. Actually that recording of the, like, the NOx, the natural gas. That is measured by a continuous emission monitor.
Every minute?
I think it's every minute. And that data then ultimately has to be reported to TCQ. Depending on the condition they put in the permit, sometimes it's every quarter and it has to turn in. Sometimes every six months, sometimes every year. But part of mine goes to CCQ.
Ma'am?
I need to get my voice just about on. One of the things that you talked about is the emissions. And that's really high on this. What if, I'm going to throw that, what if out here? What if you have an industrial accident? What if your production has to increase because there's a need for it? And there's something that was wrong? What do you plan to do to further mediation for the community in case there is some sort of damage to the final life of a water or a nursery?
Well, I, I will answer the first, the second question here, which was what if production is needing to go up? First of all, you have a permit and they're limited to X number of hours of operation. The only way to cross that line is they go back to TCQ and go back and through this entire process. Including something like this, again, in order to increase. They can't increase it without going through the permitting process. And I think the first part of what you're asking is what happens if there's a malfunction? If there's a malfunction, obviously, the facility has standard operating procedures in which they bring the facility down. Depending on what the situation is, TCQ has to be notified within X number of hours. And, and then there's plans that have to be in place for the facility to notify the general vicinity. Chandler, I'm trying to think of what could go wrong.
Yeah, I just kind of like to add on to that. So first and foremost, you know, safety is of utmost concern for us and our employees as well as being environmental stewards of the area where we're building a facility and operating that plant. So if something happens at the power plant in regards to fuel spill, there might be lube oil that might come out of the plant during refilling of certain items. All these things are recorded. We have to notify the authorities about these spills or incidents that occur. But first and foremost, you know, we work with our staff and our employees on operating safely and making sure that we do not have any type of these, these incidents to, to occur at the facility. Do everything we can to mitigate those things. In terms of operating more hours than what we're permitted to, that would require us to go back to TCQ to go through the permitting process to change the design or the number of hours of operation for the facility. And as a peaking plant, we primarily will not be, we won't operate quite a bit of the year. But when we do operate, it's generally because of either the high electrical demand or an emergency on, on the power grid. And that's kind of what we are, is we're, we're the backstop. We're the insurance for the, the transmission grid and for the electrical grid out there. This is Frank Jackal, he's one of the owners of Natus Vincere.
Most of you know that there's a lot more wind energy that's being added to the system. That's good news. But wind energy starts and stops and is unpredictable. Part of the mission for this plant is to start when the wind tapers off. And you might say, well, there's a whisper of wind all the time. That wind really doesn't count when you talk about wind turbines. Wind's got to be blowing at a certain speed for those turbine blades to operate. And if it's blowing too hard, they quit operating because they're really not turbine blades. They're like airplane wings and they stall. So when, when the turbine, when the wind stops blowing, these plants are designed, if needed, to start immediately. And as the wind starts to taper off, these units pick up. They may pick up for a very short period of time, we're talking a matter of hours. And the wind, they come back again and all of these units will shut down. They can shut down quickly. You've got to consider this unit, much like your car engine, when you need it, you go out and you start it. It starts, you put it in gear, drive away. As soon as you're ready to shut it off, you're done driving it, you put it up, you take it out of gear, turn the engine off, it's off. They don't quite run that quickly, but almost that quickly. And they're only intended to run in very specific circumstances. Turbines and the power plants that you may be familiar with, with CPS up the road, some of those are traditionally baseload, baseload units. They start and they run. And they'll run around the clock and for days and weeks at a time. These plants won't run days and weeks at a time unless there's a major, major failure in the transmission grid. And this transmission grid in our country is very large.
Go ahead.
For safety sake, is there going to be a live human being on-site to monitor twenty-four seven? Three sixty-five days a year?
In regards to twenty-four seven, three sixty-five days a year, we intend to have someone at the facility during all of these times. But if there's times of, during the spring when there's no operation, we will have security measures in place. And we're required by the North American Electric Reliability Council, the Texas reliability entity, to have certain security and safeguard measures in place in regards to that. So security cameras, security gates and so forth if there were to be no one at the facility. But our intent is to have it staffed completely.
Next question?
I'm not completely satisfied with the answers that you've given us about the emissions on the stacks. You have equipment that will measure the emissions on the stacks and you send that to someone. Well, can be public, can the people around here be notified on a regular basis of what the emissions are, what the numbers are?
Sean, I guess it's all public record, correct?
Right, the records will be kept on-site, but they are public records. And I believe we do have the authority to ask for them to give to a requester.
Well, once they send them to the TCQ, it is public record and then you can, you can, you have access to it.
It's entered as a request to see what's a plan for?
For this particular type of facility, I'm not sure if that stuff goes online anywhere, automatically, or if you would have to request it. I'd ask that question during the formal comment and that way you would receive the answer in writing.
I think the people that live around here would.
I think the people that live around here would.
Sure. Oh, I understand.
Would, okay. Then can you, can you tell us the number of hours this permit is asking for, to, for operation? Give us, how many days is that, just so I know? No, twenty-five hundred hours, how many days?
Round number is about a hundred days.
About a hundred days?
About a hundred days.
So, so you think it's supposed to just be operational a hundred days a year?
That's the maximum.
No more than that.
Maximum.
Okay, then, I know, and I wanna address the noise. You said we're still gonna hear the birds chirping and all of that, but I wanna see how that's possible. And that, that's all my questions.
Okay. The, the facilities, we work with our engineering and contracting people in regards to looking at minimize noise from the facilities. Of course, there's OSHA regulations, which probably everybody, a lot of you are aware, that they have noise regulations for the units. And we also work with our contractors, as I mentioned, to limit the amount of noise at the property line where we are. So we're looking at a sixty decimal level around the property line, and that's typically what a conversational piece would be, that they have to guarantee that. But these facilities will be much quieter than that.
Much quieter a lot.
Much quieter than a normal comp. If you're standing at, if you're standing at county road four seventy-five at the internet.
This conversation will level sixty-five a week. At the fence line, you and I can have this conversation. If you do in front of me, honest with you, I'm, I'm taking people, and I driven up to the. Just like that, I said, okay. Can you tell me if the plant's running? And I say, no, it's not running. Okay, great. Can you hear the light? No. Get into the control room. You see everything on the board is all lit up. You see that it's generating power. And we take you outside, close to the machine, and you say, oh, that's what it sounds like. This, some of the, the experience that people have are some of this old technology stuff that was built a long time ago, especially coal plants, where there's big conveyors, they're funky and they're noisy. You hear tractors, no requirement for sound management. That's thirty, forty, fifty years of technology. machinery that's built today by, by requirement, by legal requirement, by manufacturers.